Very excited to see you all here tonight. And I didn't have to use the dabbles, that's great, alright. Alright, so number one, 1.1, call to order, open session. Open session of the April 26, 2023, Government Board Trustee Meeting is called to order at 5:46 PM. 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Well now, Dr. McLeer, please, and pledge please.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for the good of its citizens.
And I want to sort of hold the agenda since we have some pizza nights in the club, so we can be able to kind of revolve a little bit. So that we can have a couple of birds in the order work. So I'd like to move item 5.6 right after 4.1.
I'll move to approve the agenda by Justin.
Second.
Great, all of the papers. Hi. So, 1.1, both approve the agenda.
Passes.
4.1, correspondence.
Good evening, this superintendent's office has received the following correspondence regarding district business on this topic. Go see, thank you. So, I will, if it's okay, I'll do part of my report and then do you want to come back to my report afterwards? Or should I just quickly go through the whole thing?
Shouldn't you do it in part of the first?
Is that okay? Okay, fantastic, thank you. So, we're thrilled this evening to be welcoming our student spotlight and students from Sycamore Ridge School. So, Mrs. Moore, would you please introduce the special guest along with Ms. Cass? And we would love to hear what we have in store for us this evening. Thank you so much. Good evening, word president, members of the board.
So, we are at 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. I'll call members of the public who have requested to address the government board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public would like to address the government board regarding the non-agenda items. Most of the papers, but speaker slip at this time, I believe we have one. And with Daniel Wood.
Testing, okay. I want to make the board aware of a California Department of Education complaint that I just won. Proper services and assessments for children in DMUSD have been denied for years. Through this decision, DMUSD will now be required to retrain their staff and ensure children receive the properly, legally required assessments. DMUSD is out of compliance with 34 CFR Section 300 dot 502B and must train their staff appropriately by May 1st, 2023. It is concerning that teachers, parents, and myself requested a review of the Special Education Department since last year, and the board did nothing to address the public's concerns. Now, DMUSD is being forced by a regulatory body to do the right thing. What is further concerning is that I made the board aware of this in my September public comments last year, and the board failed to act upon it. The thought of how many children were further denied proper assessments from then until now keeps me up at night. But not as much as the fact that there are two attorneys on the board, now three, yet the law is not being followed. I hope that with this new CDE decision, the board takes the correct steps and corrects past actions. Also, an email went out this week by superintendent Holly McCleod explaining how well secured our schools are. I would like to dissect this myth. Last year, a single mother who advocated for her son in sporadic board meetings criticizing the superintendent and board had a restraining order placed on her. DMUSD lawyers could not put the restraining order on her until the threat level was increased to that of a domestic shooter. DMUSD failed in several instances. First, if she really were a domestic shooter, DMUSD failed to properly secure the schools. Police were not dispatched appropriately, nor were proper threat assessments conducted. Had she really been in threat, our children were placed in jeopardy as the only protection the guard used was a blowhorn, which was more intended to embarrass the mother than it was to protect our schools. Not only that, but estimates are around $1 million of taxpayers' money spent on attorneys to fight the ridiculous claims. This parent won both the fictitious litigation case against her and the contempt case. The public would like to know the exact amount spent as the media can't even obtain it through a public record request. The only way to fully obtain it is to sue the board. Sue the board when there are three attorneys on it? Does that seem right? Do the right thing, DMUSD, parents' confidence has been shaken by them. Thank you.
Alright, 5.1, board recognition, DMUSD Employees of the Month, April 23.
Congratulations to these DMUSD Employees of the Month for the month of April, 2023. From Ashley Falls School, Erica Miller, same class music teacher. Colonel Delmar, Andrew Burke, sixth grade Spanish teacher. Delmar Heights, Stephanie Masefa, fifth grade teacher. Delmar Hills, Petriola de Silva, school counselor. Ocean Air, Debbie Cole, fourth grade teacher. Pacific Science School, Christine Persadov, kindergarten teacher. Sage Canyon, Leah Inbright, third grade teacher. Sycamore Ridge, Amy Mayer, sixth grade teacher. Torrey Hills, Kelly Lewis, second grade teacher. And from the district office, Nancy Ingersoll, Digital Media Specialist. Please join me in congratulating and thanking these sets of positive folks.
Thank you. And 1.2, board report from DMCTA with the president.
President Mock, board, Dr. McLeer again, Ms. Gavin, speaking. And, guys, I'd like to start by saying congratulations to Phyllis, on your appointment and welcome back to go with that. So, since your appointment, I spoke to a lot of teachers through the fabric of your service compared to before. And appreciated the work you did and we're looking forward to having you on the board. So, definitely happy to see that. Next up, I'd like a quick update just on DCTA business. I've been pretty quiet past few board meetings over the past few months for a good reason, really. That's because we've had a continued strengthening of communication cooperation identified as all concerns that teachers might have. At this point, I would say, in the four years I've served on the CTA executive board, I'd say our morale and teacher satisfaction is at most stable points in a little while. And I would say that really can contribute to maybe teachers' perception of us being able to work together more effectively to amplify their voice and gain their strengths. So, just want to point that out, that things have been going well. Not to say that it's all ringless and uncoordinated. We always have things to work through, but again, I feel like keep your confidence and effectiveness of the way we work together is at a place where we continue to be a whole thing in progress and in that direction. That's all I have tonight, so thank all for your time.
You can see, and we are moving, I'm ordered to give us a report this month. So, here, I'm going forward with Delmar, parents' decision with Sycamore Ridge School. See, that's Sara Lake.
My name is Sara Lake, I want to thank the board, cabinet, Dr. McLeer for having me here tonight. It is my pleasure to serve as a PTA president at Sycamore Ridge alongside Chelsea and our amazing staff and our board. Tonight, I'm just going to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the district as a PTA to support the board's efforts around LEVER III. And that is really learning beyond the classroom. We know that environment, I've had the pleasure also of being a part of some of the new strategic planning. And we know LEVER III environment was a big piece of District Design 2022. And in a lot of the discussions that we've had recently, it seems to carry into what the community, the parents, the staff, and others see as an important part of our children's day. And as we know, we've made lots of changes to the classrooms over the past few years. We've witnessed that at every single school with the furniture and a lot of what's happened in the classrooms. And the district has really taken that to the next level with all of the kind of flexible seating and the whiteboard tables and all of the things that our children talk about and utilize each day. But what the PTA has really worked on is how can we expand that? We've got such great flexible seating and stuff going on in the classroom, well, what does that look like beyond the classroom? And a few areas that the PTA has really focused on, these are some photos from our new outdoor lounge. We, the PTA sponsored this, Chelsea came to us and said, hey, we really have, you can see on the left-hand side there, we have a pretty blank slate, doesn't look so inviting, our staff, this is right off of our staff lounge. We think that this could be a really great space for our staff. So, we got approval to actually buy some furniture and to kind of revamp this area where our staff now can collaborate and can enjoy a break, not just inside, but also outside. We have the luxury in San Diego of beautiful weather, usually. And with that, we should really take advantage of those spaces. The next thing I want to talk about is expanding the learning environment to outdoor spaces. So, you can see an example on the left-hand side at Torrey Hills, this is right off of their science lab. They might be doing different experience, experiments, or being able to experience different messy things that might be better suited outside than inside. And then we also have the Monarch Capitole that's new at Ashley Falls and the traditional type of school garden at Torrey Hills that is a garden being lunch club at that school. So, this is something that we're super excited about at Sycamore Ridge. And this is, we have revamped our garden, it's called the Stallion Garden. But as you can see, it no longer really looks like a traditional garden. And we were really struggling to maintain this area. It is something in San Diego, as you know, you need lots of water and over the summer it would die. And then we had to have volunteers come in and every single year it was a, alright, let's get the garden back alive and let's try and maintain it. And we really decided to kind of take a different look at this space. What is it that children want? What is it that we can bring to them? And does it really have to look like a traditional garden? And the answer was no. What do we think that they might be interested in? And with collaborating with Chelsea, we came up with some things that we thought would be fun for all ages. And we now have what we call our Stallion Stage. And we have some movement areas, we have seating, we have the chalk, we have pedal play. We have places where people can actually take their grown folks outside and do some work. But this is what we are actually launching this in the next month or so for all of our students that we can really open up this space and explore and play and perform and take that learning outside of just the classroom. But thank you so much for having me today.
Alright. Pretty quick today, we're already at 5.5, there are even more members. So, first thing I want to do is I want to welcome Alan. Welcome, very happy to have you here, I'm really excited about that. Just letting you know, typically, you can kind of go down the line and everyone shares. It's a common thing to have. But this time, I'm going to share it a little bit, I'm going to go first, all right? So, first thing that I wanted to say, and I wanted to be clear about this particularly since I know there are people here and over there interested in safety and security issue. Safety and security is of utmost importance of the students and the staff, is of utmost importance to all of us and to the district. I think that's 100% clear to me, I've seen it in everything that they're doing. And I normally don't do this, but in response to kind of what the information that was kind of put out there. Yes, we're attorneys and be clear, this woman has a buyer restraining order against her. It was imposed by a judge, not by us, it was somebody by a judge. And she's remained 200 yards from all district property. So, that's not something that we asked, you know? And frankly, the judge actually went beyond what I believe was asked for. So, just wanted that to be clear, I won't delve into the details, but that's what's the issue, what is the issue. So, anyway, with that said, you know, as you can kind of see, I've had a lot on my mind the last few months. And we have periods where we deal with challenging issues under difficult circumstances and we have to make really difficult decisions. But what I'll say is in the past couple of days, I really have been able to see some of how, how the best of how this district operates. I've had the opportunity to go to strategic design meetings, which is basically the implementation phase of our strategic planning process. It's where we look at how we translate our ideas and our vision into action. So, I really could not be more excited, having been there. And couldn't be more excited for this district and this community with the work that the team was doing. I honestly came out there super pumped up. I was really excited about all the possibilities, ideas that were generated in that meeting. There were contributions from everyone, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, community members. Everyone came together with their varying perspectives and we all collectively worked to create a vision of what was wanted for the education of children in this district. And people were able to provide feedback as to how they thought we best could achieve our vision. Everyone contributed, brought their own unique lens and where we could all learn from one another and collaborate to reach a common understanding. We had thoughtful, involved discussions where we were respectful, we were engaged, we were productive. And I can't wait for these meetings, knowing that we have incredible people working in this district and in this community that deeply care and are committed to providing the absolute best education possible for the children in this community. And that education is grounded in a strong academic foundation, but it goes so much beyond that. It's where we believe students should be curious, creative, critical thinkers, able to apply the knowledge in real-world situations. It's where we embrace a culture of care and respect, where everyone's treated as an individual whose ideas and perspectives are valued. It's where we channel our resources into supporting the finest teachers we can find and creating student-centered environments to support how each individual student can learn best. I'm extremely proud of this district and all those that brought the talents that contributed to making this district even better. And ultimately, that same body of the vision that I have for this district, where we harness the strengths of everyone involved to create an incredible educational experience for every single member of students that we can all take pride in and our community cherishes. I'm incredibly excited to see a direction where this district is headed. We're already in a successful district in so many ways, but we're only climbing higher. So, I'm incredibly excited to welcome Alan again. But before I wrote this, I thought you were going to be the end. So, anyway, now, we're going to move on to Doug. But I'm really excited that Alan's part of our team and I think that we're going to, this team is going to work really well together. But I will hand off to Doug now, thank you.
And I'm sorry to let you down, I'm going to leave you on the end. I went to three of these strategic planning events and know how you feel because you do get a feeling of rah rah rah, this is great. I didn't go to the last one and that's primarily because of the Brown Act. But I anticipate going to one in the future. It'll be interesting to be involved in one close to the end rather than close to the beginning, to see the evolution. I did want to say that, it occurred to me as we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, that the Pledge of Allegiance just sounds different when there's kids saying it. I don't know if anybody picked up on that, but I will stand here. It's just nice to hear the Pledge of Allegiance being stated in that way. Anyway, welcome to the board once again, Alan. Again, I thought you were going to be open, but it's okay. I guess I stayed in. And that's my report. You're next, okay? Quite a question. I did, you should, okay? So, I want to express some gratitude from the last meeting. I don't know how many of you were here, I think most people on this side were at the meeting. It wasn't the most fun and I never ought, but I had a sense of gratitude for the other candidates. I reached out, I spoke to them all that evening, but it happens in extra time while discussions are happening over here. But I also reached out to all four of them after the meeting as well. And I'm so impressed by everyone's desire to help support the district and the community. And so, only one person can get the appointment, but it was very gratifying to reach out and get that feeling. The other bit of gratitude was receiving an email from one of the three speakers. And she thanked me, she congratulated me, she thanked me for listening and hearing her. And we had some continued conversation via email. And it's back to what I said that evening, it's this motto from First Robotics, it's called gracious professionalism. And one of the great things about this community is that even though we may not agree on everything and there's tension on certain areas, everyone's pretty gracious about it. And so, I think we modeled that behavior at the last meeting. So, now, it was time to get to work. So, started to implement my outreach plan. So, the outreach plan is both external and internal. So, from an external perspective, the first thing I did was to reach out to the PT, for instance, and see some nice interaction and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to meet the different PTAs during the PTA events. I was invited to one last night here at our strategic design meetings and had a gracious invitation to come to our place. So, I'm hoping that'll be an opportunity to reengage with the parents and the students and staff throughout the community. I've also been starting to reach out to former trustees. And that's exactly what I did when I took the role back in 2012, just to understand what they learned and get different perspectives on service on board. And that will be a continuing thing for me, I'm continuing to reach out and get with them. Also, parents and community members, of course, just scratching the surface on my outreach there. And then, just one final thought on the external outreach, I really appreciate the letters regarding safety and security. It's a very important topic for me. I have a military background and so oftentimes you're thinking about the security of your people and your families that are living on base or in the world that you live in. And I also had an opportunity to vote for seats in a place that wasn't so safe. And so, oftentimes, you'd be looking around and thinking about how you can keep people safe. And that went from the school that our kids attended to neighborhoods and workplaces. And so, that security and safety mindset, I'm sitting with the staff. And I believe that we are listening to those letters and the outreach that we're receiving and we'll act accordingly. And I will be front and center on making sure that we have a safe and secure environment for our children, our staff, and our parents. And then from an internal perspective, I had my first strategic design meeting, it was great to be with some old faces and new faces. And I also have started the conversation with the superintendent on a rotation that I can meet with all the different departments and spend some concentrated time understanding the people, the processes, priorities, and projects. And I found that was very useful before in my service because it's better to get some understanding of the great measure and cadence of budgeting and unit resources and instructional design and, you know, special education before it comes here so that we're well-rounded and making good decisions. And just talking about one department in particular, I read through the agenda and had questions about some contracts and I brought you to other topics here. And the staff was very responsive. So, Tian Martin, sitting in the back there, was kind enough, along with Chris and Holly, to sit down and walk through some contracts. Because we're spending a lot of money on important things, it's our money. But we also want to make sure this is effective to deliver our mission through our teachers, through our kids. So, I will continue to have those types of meetings, so I want to thank Tian and the rest for this week's orientation and for orientation of the week's meeting.
Well, Alan, welcome. I love hearing about, first of all, welcome back to the board, it's great to have you back, you overlapped a little while earlier on my tenure. And I love hearing about the outreach you're doing and the connection to all the multiple stakeholders in the community and the learning you're doing. And no surprise, you're sitting in here, so I'm very excited to have you on the board. And I have to say, Doug, the Pledge of Allegiance, I have the same thing, whenever we have kids here. And they say the Pledge of Allegiance is just gets into your heart, they're the sweetest. I mean, I'm having kids at all the meetings now, so thank you, Holly, for making sure that they're included in your superintendent's report. It's very inspirational to know, to be reminded of all of the butter, all this political. And yeah, I also went to the district for moving quickly and being responsive to the community about some of the safety concerns that are being raised. I'm looking forward to the upcoming parent meeting. And so, really appreciate that it just continued. So, we've been very consistent in outreach and productivity around safety, school safety in our district.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, I send my welcome back, I guess, to Alan. I think that it's, um... I hope that I've changed perspectives on certain issues over the course of the years, perhaps not. It's just a little hard for me to sit here again with another trustee who has voted against transitional kindergarten, to adopt that program. That was back in 2015 when you were on the board. And so, that's almost a decade now that our district has not had this program. That means our four-year-olds in this community have not received benefit of that program. While the rest of the state is implementing it for all four-year-olds, only five districts are not at this point. That would be this one, Carter, Rich, Santa Fe, Encinitas, and Solon Beach. It's no surprise that there are neighboring districts. In a matter of months, perhaps, the Commission on Teacher Prudentialing is going to be finalizing a teaching credential for, they call it, pre-K to pre, so that teachers can be well-prepared to teach TK. It's a train that has left the station and is not stopping. And our district is continuing to not implement a program that is well-reserved by our community's youngest learners. I also appreciate all the emails that we've received regarding the school's safety. I work in a school district that already implements its commonplace. And again, I question why our district lags behind on such implementations that seem as if we're the forefront in thinking, then it just isn't showing it sometimes. In a lot of ways, it is, but in many ways, it's not. I also attended one of the strategic design meetings on Monday night. Because I had to, I brought my four-year-old. There was no childcare for any of these meetings. I didn't see a lot of parents, I saw a handful of parents and I saw many staff members attending. And I feel like we would get a lot more community engagement if we offered childcare and if we also offered anything at the district level that wants to engage parents, that we also give the opportunity to have those meetings virtually. Because we all have busy lives and we all want to take part and lend our voice. And sometimes, we're just not able to make an in-person meeting. And there's nothing wrong with that. And we should still be able to offer our opinions and our feedback. And we should still be able to offer our opinions and our feedback. I'm also really disheartened that on the district website, there is no opportunity to submit comments regarding the strategic plan or, you know, to even figure out what all these meetings are talking about. You know, if you go, yes, you may get some... Well, obviously, if you're in attendance, you're going to be hearing at least in your table group things and getting to walk around and see posters. But if you don't go, how are you going to know what's happening? And I just, at this day and age, that's, I mean, there's so much that we can access virtually. Therapy appointments, doctor's appointments. There's so much that can be done collectively, virtually, and it is just as productive, just as worthwhile. So yes, I would, you know, I'll stop there. Yeah, and thank you.
Five point six, back to Dr. Miller.
Thank you. So definitely appreciate the involvement of our parents. We have had so many opportunities and have continued to get very good input from parents, whether it's through meetings or emails or strategic planning, PTA meetings, things that are going on at all the school sites. So it's, we definitely appreciate the involvement and input from all of our parents in those ways. And a huge thank you to Chelsea Moore and Yor Sora. Thank you for sharing your students with us this evening. It was very impressive to hear their voices and what they view as their impact on their school and how they, you can truly see the agency that they're exerting to be leaders and lead very good things in their school related to culture and making sure everyone is valued and fits in. And from the very newest students to ones who have probably been there a long time, it sounds as if there's just a place for every child, and it's wonderful. It was great to actually happen to be at Sycamore Ridge. It was yesterday. All of the days are running together for State of the District. This is the time of the year that I do State of the District at Everett, the team comes with at every school. So a moment in time to stop, talk to the staff. Always, sometimes it's a couple of meetings of the staff so that everybody has a chance to be in the room together. Where are we with some of the big things that are going on in the district? Have a chance for employees to be able to give their thoughts and input, ask questions. It's, so it's always fun to be able to speak with all of our staffs at this time of year. And at Sycamore Ridge yesterday, it was just, it's a wonderful place, a wonderful school all around. So thank you for being here tonight. Also have the chance to meet with Kevin Kuniyan, DMCTA, as well as DMSEF. Kevin, thank you for your continued leadership. You have been steady for a very long time. And it's very much appreciated how you bring things together that we can discuss and make this a good place to work for everybody. Thanks for looking out for our teachers, our teachers and staff at all times and all of our staff as well. Very much appreciate you being that advocate for every teacher. We have, I was able this past week to go to Cardiff School. They had their celebration for, finally, after four years of construction, they did a ribbon cutting, and it was very, very special. So it was lovely to see again the impact of all of that hard work that that community did. They stuck together, they hung in there for children. And to see the place completely full and alive with children and families was really a testament to a community doing the right thing for kids. And it's going to make an impact for decades to come in that community. So it was exciting to see and to be able to speak to their board members and the community and staff as well. So that was great. And again, Alan, thank you and welcome. Thank you for your involvement, and we're thrilled to come back as a board member and knowing you will continue to look out for what's best for all of the children in our district. So thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, five point seven, public input concerning items on the agenda. For anyone who'd like to address the government board, particular agenda, speaker's slip will be turned in at this time. You recognize the podium when your requested agenda item comes up. Three minutes, address the government board. Just letting you know, these, I think, some speakers are for eight point two so that it will come in a little bit, so it'll get to you soon. Five point eight, or approval minutes. Motion approval minutes for March 15th, 2023 minute. Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve minutes for March 15th passes. Four ayes and now no no's. Six, consent agenda, six point one to six point one four, consent items. Are any questions? Oh, sorry, that is sufficient. Oh, my bad, my bad. All right, we had, I got you. So we are also, we apparently have the eleven twenty point three minutes. And is there a motion to approve those minutes? All right, is there a second? All right, sounds good. All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve minutes for eleven twenty point three passes. And consent agenda, six point one, six point one four, consent items. Any questions or any... Does it look like, okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item six point one was, it was six point one. Second. All in favor? All right, aye. Motion to approve consent agenda passes. And we are at eight, so we're searching for all C, eight point one four, for strategic planning process updated.
I'm eager to talk a little bit more about this this evening. You are all very familiar, all board members, with this process, or at least the most recent meetings. Alan, I know you're familiar with where we are at this stage of our strategic planning. You might remember it began way last spring, and now as we were thinking about the culmination of already 2022, and here we are, April 26th of 2023. So this evening, I'll provide an update on the strategic design team meetings. That's when we moved into strategic planning, actually articulating the plan now. I'll talk a little bit about the process timeline and where we are in the strategic planning process and then our partnership with Dr. Alan Daly, our Better Together partnership. We focused in on the direction the board set out at the beginning of the process that would be collaborative and inclusive in order that we could realize our vision through the articulation of long-range goals. And it is exciting now to see some of our long-range goals actually coming to life and begin to develop. And as we do that, it's also exciting to see our vision deepen with the definition coming forth in our Portrait of a Learner. So as we move through the process, we'll share more about that. But that does help us provide a lot of depth behind our vision when we really describe what is a Portrait of a Learner. So those have been some highlights to this point, definitely. So this is where we are in the process. You can see down here, we just finished, as a couple of you referred to, the first two meetings of strategic designs. We led through all of the meetings of portrait design, surveyors, our staff, community, parents at the, at certain point during that part that you get their valid priorities on competency areas, then moved to get through the rest of the portrait design process, and now into strategic design. You can see here that as we move through strategic design, we will be arriving at what will be a draft toward the end of May. So May 25th, when we come back to that strategic design team meeting, we'll be really preparing a draft together as a team that then we'll be able to take back out to the staff and community to get their inputs. So we'll do another survey of our staff and community, and that's a time when we'll be able to get input from everybody as far as what they see in the plan, additional ideas, comments, and thoughts. And they will be able to see all of those pieces that we brought so far in the plan. And then as we move into June, that's when we anticipate for approval of the new strategic plan. So that final, so what have we done in the last couple of meetings? We have, this actually was just Monday and Tuesday of this week, so it's fresh in some of our minds. The strategic design team came together to really make that Portrait of a Learner that was talking about, that I've been talking about the first part of the slide, into a reality. And as we focus on the strategic planning process, we really are setting priorities that will show us and tell us how we're going to channel our energy, channel our resources, obviously our finances, what we pay attention to, and what we are all about for next week in the near future as well as next several years. So we did, in this first meeting, consider four strategic levers. We've had levers in the past, actually, we had conversational lever. I cannot, now I have it that I say lever. I don't know. I'm trying to change. For some reason, when I talk about strategic plan, it's just what I refer to it as. So we have had these ideas around levers that really have propelled us and advanced us with more emotion throughout the last five years. Keeping that understanding around that, there are big, big parts, big ideas, big focus areas that will continue to move us forward in defining what those four are. So we had a lot of conversation and input around these four new and different strategic levers for the next five years, and then identified strengths and opportunities within each lever. That was on Monday. And then when we moved into Tuesday, that same team of parents, community members, staff members, considered themes that had emerged. So everybody at the meeting had talked about these levers and what were some of the big things to take into consideration as we thought of our strengths and opportunities. When we came back on Tuesday, everybody looked at the work that had been done the night before. And what, as we were looking at strengths and opportunities within each of those levers, what was emerging as themes? And also, what was connecting to some potential five-year long-range objectives for each of the levers, one through four? Everybody provided input on that. We worked in groups, we gave individual input. And then we identified strategies in our groups as how do we operationalize these? These are our levers and our long-term objectives. What is the strategy behind that? How do we actually make that happen? And had some very in-depth conversations at our smaller groups on how we operationalize that in terms of strategy. As we move then into the last meeting in May, I will just talk a little bit about that. We will be, we will be able to put all of this together and really think about if we put all of the levers, the five-year objectives, the strategies, and then think about priorities as we move forward, coming up with how do we articulate that into a draft strategic plan that we can share out to the broader community and get input? That is what we plan to do and prepare for that on that May 25th meeting. The other thing I said I would talk about that is a big part of this work together is our Better Together partnership. Dr. Alan Daly is working along with his team from UCSD to really address what we've all identified as a district, as a way, we've identified needs around student success. We want to measure culture importance and the important strategic initiatives as we work through our strategic planning. And so we really want to capture data and report actionable information throughout the life of a strategic plan. So if we think about where are we in this Better Together partnership? We are right now, Dr. Daly is in the development part of the process. So he and his team are looking at the constructs, what are the constructs that we'll go into and align with our strategic plan and our priorities that we're going to be setting forth to embark upon as we move into the next several years. That is intended to be ready to design and test in the fall of 2023. So he and his team are very busy right now so that it's ready for fall of 2023. Then we move into collecting data in phase three of the partnership. That will be fall and winter of the next school year. Then they clean and prep the work, prep all of the data, which they'll have ready for us, winter, spring of 2024, and definitely report out in a formal way to the board, the community, all of us, all of the stakeholders spring 2024 and early summer. With obviously the plan for this partnership to continue throughout the life of the strategic plan and we continue to choose to move forward with it. Our next meeting for strategic design, as I discussed, is the end of May. All are invited, and it's been great to have such a nice procession of people in the room. A lot of voices, as was already mentioned, there are many perspectives. It is exciting and very interesting to hear the various perspectives at every meeting and consider what different lenses people are looking through if we design our strategic plan. Exciting work.
Thank you very much, Dr. Miller. Any questions?
Well, thank you. This is a very robust strategic planning process. I'm sure even G 2022 did not have this many steps and discussion involvement from all the different constituencies. So it's great to see it. I think we'll do two of that, that I think will be scheduled for the May 25th meeting. So I appreciate that. Could you talk about what it will look like after the May 25th meeting when you present the draft plan? And what are the steps for staff and the community input? What are ways that the community can view or hear about, whether it's in the video or how will that work for our meetings? And then what is the date for the board?
Yes, I'll start with the end. We're intending that we're going to be in June, we're meeting in June. And following the May 25th meeting, and actually those that are in the room on May 25th probably will have some insight into one of the things that we will need to consider as a whole design team is how we do operationalize it and communicate all of the parts out and get input. So we intend that the whole plan in its entirety as a draft will be presented to the community at large. That includes our staff, our parents, obviously, our community members that, you know, that we expand beyond that, and perhaps people in our community have input on what's the best way to get the inside feedback from everybody involved. There will be a way, open-ended way, where people can give their ideas, their feedback, things to be considered in the plan at that time in its entirety, so.
Okay, great. It'd be great. So if you have the next, sure, the next meeting, I'll hear more about the details of how that feedback process will work after you give the presentation so everybody knows exactly how to engage. And just on the top of the babies, because I know we asked about this when these sessions were planned, and Shelley explained to us the attempts, but this is for to get babies today. Can you just make me explain it one more time, Shelley, for everyone's benefits? I know that was a concern.
After-school care staffing continues to be some of the most challenging for us, finding staff available. They're some of our most difficult positions. And those are the staff members we rely on when we do evening events. And so it is completely, because it is beyond their regular day, it is completely dependent on staff willing to work in the evening. And sometimes we're able to offer it, sometimes we are not. But always when we need or have a desire for care in the evening, we reach out to our director, Vanessa Carroll, and then she in turn reaches out to her staff. And it is entirely up to them whether they choose to be available or not. And many of our after-school care workers work multiple jobs and are students.
So is that the only childcare we're allowed to use is the after-school care program employees?
In general, childcare has been very difficult to make available. No, it is not the only childcare that you are able to do.
People would be happy to work for those hours. I'd like to make a motion that any parent engagement coming at the district level also include virtual meetings in addition to in-person meetings. If you want to do this thing as part of our strategic plan, as part of how we proceed going forward.
Yeah, that's not, it's not unactioned items on the agenda. So it's not something that we can make an actionable motion like that. we can make an actionable motion like that.
Can I make a comment in support of what Catherine's motion? But not, sorry.
Well, before you do, we could have it on the next agenda.
That's what I was going to suggest, is how about we could have that discussion and finally it's actionable. If this is something that we're interested in, how about we maybe consider this for the next agenda?
It's just not agendized as an action item, so people that might support it aren't here. And I hate to, well, it would violate the ground.
Yeah, but it's not an agenda, so it's not, it's actionable, we can do that right now. But again, I would be willing to consider this and do this on the next, the next agenda if people are interested.
Look, take this as your request that it find its way onto the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I wasn't asking you questions. I don't see, I mentioned, any ability for community members to go on our website and submit feedback regarding the strategic plan or find out anything about what's been going on at these meetings that for some, or a lot, but people are very hard to attend. Why is that?
It's updated every, it is updated. It's updated every time.
How can people comment on and see ideas that are shared on the website?
Well, we're still in the development phase of the strategic.
I've asked you about this since before we even started the strategic, but I showed you what's happening, we didn't find that, so I said.
Right, we had the survey, right, we had the survey part during the strategic planning, and we're going to have the survey.
Which survey part? So one of the people we're supposed to rank competencies? Okay, that was like a list that was provided by our consultant of competencies for different areas of Portrait of a Learner. They're very broad, they're very general, it can apply to any school district, any, you know, employee. That's fine, there's that, but when you're talking about getting feedback from our community, from our families about.
Shelley, would you just, right, would you just, and your survey that we have open right now as well?
And your survey was just as broad and general. So, do you want to, would you just, I think that's.
That's open right now.
I'm not asking my question. I would like our community, firstly, I would like the results of the kindergarten survey to be released to our families who participated in the survey, perhaps to the community as That would not be done. And I'm sure Dr. Allen would be a proponent of if you take the survey, here are the results. This survey was administered, no results were shared, other than at this board meeting. So if you didn't attend the board meeting, you don't know what the results are. We don't have any attachments, so there's, you know, some of the audience back there is looking through that binder, because we don't have this, this attached, the strategic plan presentation is not in a caption on here, neither is the next presentation. Why? I mean, if you're talking about a strategic plan, I feel like these are issues that are fundamental for our district to address. I don't know if this is, I can't make a motion about it, but I would like to see the results of the kindergarten survey released to DMRC parents. I would like them to be asked if, you know, you did, you sent a survey question asking if they want kindergarten to start from day one holding, and then you talked to the teachers, and you got their feedback, and then that was it. The case was closed. There was no discussion, there was no input sharing.
There was discussion and there was no.
There was discussion.
There was no, like, there was no.
No, there was no discussion. Whoa. There, okay. I, I feel like this is part of the strategic plan.
Yeah, we're going a little up, a little up top.
I don't think so, Chiuah, no. And I also feel like part of the strategic plan would be, or I don't make a motion, I guess, for the next agenda, that we not only share the information for the kindergarten survey to our families, but we ask our families, given the information that we know that these assessments, we haven't shared that information either with families, like what the assessments, how the length of them. I talked to the kindergarten teacher, the kindergarten teacher that approached me, told me how long it takes to do them, so they would be a maximum of three weeks. Why do they have six weeks? That's something that parents should be given and saying, at least, hey, here's the information. Now make your decision with us, not we make our decision, that's it. Going back to transitional kindergarten, our community was never asked what they wanted. They have never been asked since its discontinuation in 2015. Strategic plan is a huge deal. We're going to Sacramento to talk about it in a few days. The whole state is implementing this program. It's nowhere to be found in any of our assessments. It's like we're keeping the blinders on, just like with the, like, why? It's these things, I just, I don't understand why we don't want to talk about it. It's a dead horse, it's not a dead horse. TK is not a dead horse.
Can I, could I respond to that? Because I'll go on a matter of saying that I support transitional kindergarten 100%.
Then fuck it.
I don't have the $40 million that we need for millions.
If every single district other than Cardiff and Rancho Sandin which, oh geez.
Again, this is not what we're talking about. We're talking about strategic planning. This is not.
This is part of strategic plan, Chiuah.
No, it is not.
Yes, we have Portrait of a Learner, we have all these great competencies that like something, something has put in our lap, that's amazing, that's great.
And we'll discuss this at another time, but it's not appropriate right now. I mean, first of all, the things you're talking about have been discussed, they were agendized, and there was opportunity for discussing. You know, if you want to make that, put it on the agenda again, and you want to have the discussion again, we can try to do that. You know, but I don't think it's like, let's look on a laundry list of my preferences right now, just because it's not where you want to be. I mean, I understand your concern, I understand.
I feel like they're valid, as we plan for the next five years of our district, to not talk about these issues is.
Absolutely, I agree. I agree, these are important issues. I mean, no one's saying that they're not important issues. That's partly why we've discussed them in the past.
But I don't.
And we will, and we can, if you're discussing, you wish to, and you could talk to me about it and say, hey, Chiuah, can we put this on the agenda? And I could have that discussion. You've never talked to me about that. I mean, you're welcome, what is welcome, I mean, we can, after this meeting, I will, we can talk, like, what is it that you want to put on here? And we can talk about it, and we may stick it on the next agenda, another presentation we made, and we can have that discussion at that time. But it's just not really relevant, I think, to what we strategic planning process is. I mean, I hear those issues, I hear they're important, I understand.
So I wanted to ask a follow-up question on the strategic planning process, and actually I want to reflect how much Catherine said during her board report, because I was in the room for last night's program, and I agree, there can be ways to bring others along with the journey. So it's a great group of people in the room, and I think Catherine asked a good question, and we can challenge ourselves to bring others into that room even if they can't be there. The other point related to that is if I look at the timeline, we have our next meeting on May 25th, and then we'll have time for survey and input, and then try to act in less than 30 days at the June 21st meeting. So I'm, I'm going to ask, not as a motion, but as a request to staff, can we think creatively about how we bring people along the journey before the May 25th meeting so that people can see the process in action? And even if they can't be in the room, they can reach out to people, or they know who to reach out, to give input a little bit earlier, if it's appropriate, at May 25th. And in that way, people are primed and ready after May 25th, when it comes time to survey, they've already thought about the questions they'd like to ask. So I just would like to request to staff if we can think about creative ways to inform more people, maybe it's through PTAs, maybe it's through an opportunity for, you know, whether it's video or however we do outreach, not just to say it's on the website, but maybe something, one more proactive step to get people up to date on the process so that when it's time for the survey, we get a maximum opportunity for people to give up them.
Just to piggyback off that, the one that I attended on Monday, I just see, so there was, it was, I think, let me right now, we needed to look at all the, we need to do strengths and weaknesses, I think, for four of the levers. And I'm, I'm thinking, hopefully if we could put on our website and have people do the same thing and share that, and share their, their opinions on strengths and weaknesses. It's, it doesn't need to be limited to, if you're in the room that night, you get to run this thing.
We can definitely look at, we can definitely look at how to reach out and get input, definitely.
Actually, just following up with that, you know, the same question I was asking about, what specifically they're going to do, but when you mentioned the May 25th, the timing of it, the school kind of ending right, right there, maybe there's time to schedule in advance to have meetings at the school sites for the schools, maybe. It was kind of tight, maybe get to the end of the year, but that might be one idea. I'm just brainstorming, I mean, Allen's brainstorming, Patrick's, so I mean, hopefully, I just, I agree, so before, which is, let's think about what the variables are for Legion and that boss that had, about before May 25th, because that's who's going to be ready, but whatever it is, and if we have to vote on July, if we're going to, we can wait, you know, to vote on it, as long as we make sure we have time to finish the process on Friday.
And I think that it's a very clear, again, that we always want as much engagement as possible. I think you have to think about how that engagement can be done. If you're not looking at this sequence of, of meetings, they build upon one another. And so I do understand that there is complications, like to just open it up and say, hey, what, what do you believe are the strengths, what do you believe are weaknesses, without even understanding what you're talking about in terms of strengths and weaknesses of whatever level they're discussing. I understand that.
I didn't attend all the meetings, and I wouldn't be able to do, be part of that. I think that that's.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we don't open, I'm not saying.
But I think that you're not giving credit to the public and to our families, and they can't figure things out and make, and make it.
That's not what I'm saying.
Insightful, it's given by. Well, I understand, you're saying that, okay, one of the meetings was, was, from what I heard, dedicated, the bulk of the meeting was dedicated to designing the logo. Okay.
Well, I think you have to give them more credit, that it wasn't just designing a logo for a slop, I mean, I, I wasn't at every meeting, I could only attend.
Sort of parenting, I admire people, so.
I could only attend as many meetings as I could attend. And I will tell you that I did not understand some of the things that were happening at our meetings. It took some kind of first example to go apart.
Well, I saw the woman who attended every single meeting, and she said when she came back on Monday night, a lot had changed, and she was wondering, she got disconnected between the last meeting she attended and the one she was at.
And I mean, I think that can be a fair question to be asked, but if you have things like, you feel like there's some sort of disconnect, you know, are.
This was not going to be, this was coming from a parent that I sat with.
Good, why are you raising that issue?
I think that it's important for there to be transparency from all the events, and that's what's lacking. If you're not in attendance, you're saying that you're not able to contribute, if you're looking at meeting number five, or meeting number 1234, you can't give input.
I can say, I can say that, just saying, they build, they, those meetings are, they work and build one another. If you don't.
What are you discussing with that?
I don't, look, it's not my responsibility to determine how the input is collected. We suggest to them that we want more input to be put, and we've done that. We want as much public input as possible.
But we're not getting as much as possible. Certainly not, and I think it's easy enough to, I'm sure the consultant that we pay $1,000 to, I asked him, he's sending us it all the time, and yet the districts that he works for, provide ways for families and community members to engage who are unable to be present at those meetings, also to be more transparent as to sharing out what is being discussed, and ideas are being created at the meetings.
We're really pleased with what's going on, so we can definitely look at how we share that, and as, as, you know, all of the meetings are open, we have people as a team, so that's been one of the, I think, you know, the vision of this board and the direction board, board from the beginning. So it's a great to have different people at different meetings, and we can definitely, as a team, you know, think about how are the things that we can get input and sort these with process.
Are there any other questions regarding this topic?
President Ma, if I, if I could.
Yes.
Dr. McClurg asks me to speak to the LCAP survey, so the Local Control Accountability Plan is one of the documents that is directly linked to our strategic plan. It is one of the ways we gather input, and that survey is open now until Friday, and that has been sent to all community members.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to A.2, Board of Us Will Save Me. So I know that there are some comments out there, just letting you know, how this works is that staff provides a presentation, which also kind of updates you as to what is happening, and then we, as a board, will ask for our input, and then we'll be open to public comment. I'll go down the list of the ones that we have, and then we'll do a follow-up. So, so A.2 with Jane. So we'll move on to, yeah, the public comments. So I'll call names and.
Great.
Uh. Are there any other comments on this issue?
I just want to thank everyone for coming and, and taking the time to scrutinize a really important issue and being engaged in this. I'm happy for having this meeting, I mean, and I appreciate those of you who raised specific topics that could be discussed during that meeting, and I'm sure there'll be more opportunities for that during that meeting, so just wanted to appreciate you for being involved. I also thank you all for your time and coming out tonight, and I know we've received a lot of emails, so not everyone is in attendance who submitted emails to us, so again, I would hope that the district would provide an opportunity for a virtual meeting for more parents to be able to take part in these discussions, because clearly there are a lot of areas besides what people are mentioning that are important to discuss.
Yeah, again, I echo everything everyone said, I just, I do want to say that this district, as you've kind of seen, is responsive and very thoughtful about the way they're doing everything. They will have a meeting with you, that you will be able to, you know, sit with them and hear further, and so, you know, I appreciate you all for doing that, and I hope that you all are able to make and pass the word along to those air audibles to hear about it, and so you can ask them additional questions and, you know, face-to-face, it's a little bit different in this kind of setting, it's a little bit difficult to, to engage, so. But thank you very much. Is there something, is there something further?
I'm just. I just. It's. I do have a question, I guess. So I know that, you know, districts around the county have had years. Is there a reason why we haven't implemented that already?
I'm not familiar with districts around the county. I know that you mentioned it's NDA to be unified. We are, we have been speaking to other districts in our North Karen County area. There are other districts that are in the implementation process right now that are, that are, we've been talking to them, we've been getting information from them, and so we are moving forward now. We have had, as I mentioned earlier, we have had law enforcement walk campuses previously, and there was not a recommendation. And we were taking the recommendations that were given to us at the time, and that was not one. But now with being responsive to what we're hearing from parents, we are moving forward.
Thank you. And we will move on to number nine, operation facilities. Order, first nine point one, order for facilities update with facilities.
Good evening, President Ma, members of the board, Dr. McClurg. This evening, my facilities update, we will do an update on Delmar Heights. It's who we go there, that one is modernization and Pacific Sky School. So when looking at Delmar Heights, I can say it was a pleasure to take the litigation off of my update and focus on construction. As you know, we started March 6th. We do have an anticipated completion date of May of 2024. We know that we'll be able to, we are very confident we'll be able to finish in time. So we'll be able to do it in year events, and then we'll be working for, there's a way to move that timeline and completion dates up as much as we can. We'll absolutely be striving for that. But we know that we'll be able to get that done, and we'll be working with Valfor and the teams to make sure we're able to have any of your events, make sure that we're able to celebrate that school before the end of next school year. And also we'll be able to bring updated cost impacts to the May board meeting. And because we're at the point now where we're getting back to where we started when we had the injunction, and that's allowing us to get a sense of where we are going forward. At this point on the site, we have just had a certification of building pads for the main building and the admin building. We're working on getting the final piece for the multi-use room. You can see up here in the top of the screen, there is a lot of work for underground utilities going in there, as well as from the boxes that go in. And I include this picture on the bottom, right, because the rain has really put a damper on things. And it's caused us to have some just slowdowns. And we actually had time where the team at Valfor, in order to dry out the land there, had actually dug up a couple of D, D, spread it out, dried, brought it back in. Because when they were trying to compact it to have those pads, it was actually kind of squishing out. So with that delay, what the team did, one of our subcontractors, they had been going in and prefabricating a lot of the underground facility work for plumbing. So what you see in that bottom picture is a lot of that that was done in the meantime to try to keep things moving forward. And so I have to say, we're very fortunate, we built a great team here. Valfor is really on top of things. Our team with, you know, the O R group is returning things over really quickly. And so we are moving. It will be very exciting to get those pads in and start dating the concrete because as you'll remember with Pacific Sky, once you get that done and start seeing things go vertical, it really starts to move and you can see the layout of things. So I'm excited to see movement, and it's really starting to go over there at Delmar Heights. For Delmar Hills, I'm here to share, so we have gotten updated cost estimates. And we can work through this. Cost estimates are coming in in the range of three to five million dollars over budget. And that obviously is frustrating, but what we're doing now is reviewing options. Unfortunately, the combination of the seismic upgrades, the wall replacements that that required, numerous code-related in our systems that need to be replaced for the long-term operations have taken the design that we presented and led to this cost being higher than we had hoped. So we're looking at options for what would we need to do to bring it in line? What is the budget for as designed and, or the estimate for as designed? We're going to come back with an update on those options at the May board meeting. So we have more to share with you and more than just what we are seeing with this being over.
Chris, can I quickly ask, just over budget, over load of the budget previously?
So the budget for construction costs is fourteen and a half million dollars, twenty million for the whole project.
Okay, and so three million on top of the twenty.
Yeah, correct. And so when we're looking at, with this group, when we're looking at, they're looking at the construction costs. So the construction cost's coming in at seventeen and a half to almost twenty million, depending on a couple of options that they're looking at. And so what we wanted to do is, what I've asked them to do, and we're working with Arison Hall and with Lion Office to say, well, what would it take to get you into that fourteen and a half million construction cost? And then talk about, here are the options we have that we can bring to the board next month. We also, and I'll talk to this with Pacific Sky, because we'll be getting some updates, and I think we'll have some positive updates in the budget there with what we do with our final number. But then I think what we're going to need to do is take a look at, here's where we're finding out with Delmar Heights, because we'll have a much more solid number at the next board meeting. Here's where we're looking at Delmar Hills. Here's what we'll bring next month to Pacific Sky and say, here's actually the number that we're under with the G M P. And we will be under, and we're finalizing that number. And then what we're really going to likely need to do is say, so what does that mean for our facilities program? We've also had two and a half years of the highest construction escalation cost that we've seen in years. When we were doing our F and P, the average over the previous twenty years was three and a half to four percent. And we've seen nine or ten percent each year the last couple of years. And so what I would propose, and I think we should consider, is giving us some time to look at the costs on all of the modernizations, and then coming back and having a budget workshop in the fall. And I think that having an opportunity to look at the implications beyond just those three projects, what that means for the rest, and then talking about what does that mean, and updating the board through a budget workshop. And then looking at what do we need to do next? Because we're also at a time where then we can have conversations based on that. What master planning updates do we need to do? What do we need to do to think about what that means across the board? So I think that there is more conversation needs to have. And I think that it takes some time and effort on our staff to bring you the information to have a good conversation and an informed conversation of what that means. So this is where we are now, and that's what I would see as steps that we can take to move forward. With Pacific Sky School, as I said, I do have, I will have positive information. The final project cost is anticipated, and may I know that it's going less than the G M P with the rest of the board? And I think it'll be, I hope, almost seven figures less. So we should have some positive information with that. Obviously, it's tempered by some of the things with Delmar Heights and with Delmar Hills. And some of that's just related to us being delayed that has caused some of that. But we also are in an escalatory time. So we'll bring that back. We'll also, I'm hoping to have a notice of completion to really try to close that project out and put a bow on it and then be able to move forward. Just in sharing with Pacific Sky, though, I do think that it highlights a little bit about why we're able to start so quickly with Delmar Heights. You know, this being a state-of-the-art school, and it's really a testament to the teams that we brought in. And I'm very proud to get to work with the team at Arison Hall that's on Pacific Sky. O B R did a great job as the architects. We've seen the same thing with Valfor Baby and D L R Group. And those teams really are what make the difference in being able to get a project done. In this case, it was supposed to be nineteen months, we did it in fifteen. We're looking at how we can hopefully shave off a little bit on Delmar Heights to finish it off more quickly. And then when you work collaborating with those teams, and we have the oversight and connection, Mike Yalston did a wonderful job, Carlos Alves is doing a fantastic job. It helps us also to keep it on time and on budget, and hopefully, in the case, here it's coming in a little bit under budget. And so it's exciting to see that and see it come together in such a positive manner. And so with that, I have any answer, any other questions?
Thank you so much for the work you're doing on that first side of your, it's something under budget. So that's fantastic. I think a budget workshop would be a wonderful idea. I'll, I'll present, and we'll try to schedule something for that and get on a calendar in the near future, or fall as you suggested. Are there any other questions, comments?
Thanks, Chris. So what updates can be done this summer on Delmar Hills?
There aren't really any updates that can be done on Delmar Hills this summer.
Okay, so nothing can get started there yet?
No, definitely not this, and we're never going to be able to start this summer. It is, for a while now, we aren't going to be able to start until next summer. And that doesn't mean that we won't be able to start before next summer, in summer twenty-four. We still have time to get to the S A, get approval, and be able to move forward in that timeline. And that's why I've been working with teams to move forward and getting the information on those cost estimates that we can have informed decisions when we bring information to boards, we can keep that moving forward and not stop.
I also, with all the new builds, I just, again, want to reiterate how important it is that we're planning for U T K because we're going to have to, at some point, have classrooms with bathrooms in them that accommodate U T K.
Just so I understand, we're still getting D S A approval? Well, on another track, we're looking at the budget, I don't want to stop.
No, we're not, because if we're going to bring that to the board, here are, here are the potential options for what would it take to get us into an estimated within budget? And what would we potentially have to cut? Or do we keep it as designed and have to increase the budget? So I mean, what we will do is bring it to the board. Here are some options that we have for Delmar Hills and have some discussion about that. That doesn't mean that we are not going to have time to go to D S A and prepare for summer twenty-four. So we have time to do that. But I am not having Lion Office right now move into creating the final construction documents because we are considerably over the budget, and I want to make sure that we come to the board. And we have the time to share, here is what it would take to get it within Rome, and here is what it would look like if we do it as designed now.
Is there anything we can get approval for from D S A due to that process?
It is, but it's not, it's not that long that we can't do this and get them. Because again, we still have over twelve months to get it finalized. So we'll be in okay shape. I mean, it will take six months to get D S A approval, so we won't be, we're still okay at the timeline. I've been talking to Lion Office about that part as well.
And I know a lot of the problem is the retrofit. Is that something that?
Yeah, well, that's part of the budget problem, but that would still be designed in regardless. And so there's certain things that wouldn't have to change. For example, by doing this, we will have to do a bunch of wall replacements. So that's going to stay. We need to do the roofing, that's going to stay. So there's certain things that are already designed in. It's not a goal to redesign it to bring us within budget. It means that I'll have to change pieces of the design. So it's not as though we are starting anew if we make some adjustments to this. But we want to make sure that we're having a informed update of what does that mean if we cut something? And so I want to make sure that we are clear about that, and then we can discuss. Or is it making more sense to add some budget to it? And so that's, I think that's the decision that will have to be made. And so I want to make sure that I can give you as much information about what those impacts look like and what the options are.
And in all those scenarios that you're going to be presenting to us in May, are the portables out now, the temporary buildings that you were talking about?
We don't have any temporary, we don't have any portables included in the proposal.
Thank you. And thanks for all of your work on all these projects. It's great to see Delmar Heights moving forward at such a fast pace. But then obviously, being four months under time and under budget on Pacific Sky is really impressive. So thanks for your continued efforts and that of your team to make that happen.
Our pleasure. Hoping for the same at Delmar Heights. Thank you very much, Chris. Ten point one, board review, receive and file member in Citizens Oversight Committee, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, Daniel over the fourth.
So the Citizens Oversight Committee annually book does an annual report that she has shared with the board. On March twentieth, we met with our Citizens Oversight Committee, it was our last meeting. It was held at that time, the Oversight Committee reviewed this report as well as the audit that was done and certified it. I would will say, if you look at this, there are a couple of sections. Section one is the membership. Section two talks about the activities of the Oversight Committee. Section three goes through a number of findings, which talk about the committee meeting, reviewing reports, site visits, and then goes into certifying that we are complying with the compliance program as written. And at the end of number nine, they say, based on the foregoing, Delmarian schoolers should say compliance with requirements of Article thirteen A one D three of the California Constitution, which was added when we, when it was created to be able to make a general obligation bond at fifty-five percent to requirements of Citizens Oversight Committee. And so this is presented on behalf of Citizens Oversight Committee. Attached to it is a copy of the Annual Financial Performance Audit, which applies also with the law in looking at Citizens Oversight Committee. And this is really for, as it says in the item, it is a receiving file. And so this is, in essence, the Citizens Oversight Committee providing the board with the reports to share that they have done the work and they're certifying that the district is in part of oversight and is doing the job.
Thank you, Chris. I know that members aren't here, but I appreciate their work and participate in this committee. Are there any questions? And has our motion approved the measure I'm on Citizens Oversight Committee, twenty twenty-one?
Actually, it's just receiving files, I don't think, I don't think.
Okay, it's receiving, okay, sounds good. Thank you. If we don't need any action, then receiving filings, thank you. And we are on to our closing items. Twelve point one, order me a reminder of upcoming M C events. Twelve point two, order me a reminder of upcoming district M S and P T events. And then twelve point three, preliminary items for May twenty-three for your board meeting. And I know you want to have some discussion about that. I don't know if you want to discuss it here and have us decide it now, or if you'd rather just kind of have discussion with me and have talk about it and decide.
I don't like, I don't like sharing it now.
Okay, because I think like what we had done in the past was, or at least in our past governance workshop, would we kind of decided that we bring up here, and there's a whole work we decide whether or not we want it on the next agenda.
That's fine. A few items. The first one would be, I would like a review of the second step curriculum. And then getting student feedback on that program, family impact, family input on the program, and then also staff input. And then hearing about two or three other S E L programs that are successful in comparison. That would be one thing. Another would be that we make a motion to, for, I'm not sure how to say it, to have the presentations that we get in our board packet attached to what the public views. They're not going to approve binders or take snapshots on their phones. The one that I mentioned, making it so that when we have a district level parent engagement, parent community engagement event, that it also be not only in person, but also presented virtually. I would say, please, the meeting that's upcoming on May ninth, you know, have that virtual as well.
Since we don't have a meeting.
No, I know. I'm just, that's why I'm.
Can we, somebody brought something up that was very interesting to hear. And that is, if we're going to be talking about all the things that we don't have in terms of security, does it make sense to broadcast that by?
Anyone from the public could attend the in-person meeting.
Absolutely. But if you're saying that it's going, your request is that May ninth meeting, you're not only specifically talking about that because there's not going to be another board meeting before that. Let's think about that, because if in fact, at that meeting, we're going to talk about things that the school doesn't have in terms of security, does it make sense to broadcast that virtually? And I'm not giving my opinion or report. I'm just wanting us to consider that.
I'm seeing you have a virtual forum where people can participate.
I'm not commenting on the virtual forum specifically with regard to that meeting and the fact that it deals with safety and security and perhaps the lack thereof or the alleged lack thereof.
I think you're making the assumption that if if it's held virtually, there might be more.
Part of the reason.
I'm not making the, somebody brought it up that we should redact the portion of.
No, I know. I understand.
Part of the reason why I was suggesting that maybe I have this discussion with Holly is that we can kind of come up with these ideas, like how do we best present this? I understand your concern of trying to be able to make it more accessible to the public. Some of those concerns that Doug's raising, I think are valid concerns. And I think it's something for me to, for us even, to be able to discuss the stat first before we make a decision as to what, what would be best in terms.
Okay, so my suggestion is merely that there's a forum for people to attend virtually for this upcoming May night meeting. That was my suggestion. But what I'm asking for on the agenda next time is that we have a discussion about making sure or proposing that we also have virtual opportunities for community members, staff, families to attend engagement events. That was another one. And then I would also like to propose that we, I guess, vote on, you know, something that I feel, okay, releasing or sharing the kindergarten survey results with D N U S D families who were given the survey, but they were not given the results. And then asking a subsequent question about they were asked one question, but asking a subsequent one to try to marry what the teachers have said is important, which is providing time for assessments. And give parents the opportunity to synthesize that information and ask them if there's another approach such as we shorten the timeframe of the minimum day schedule. And lastly, I would ask that we discuss asking our community that has never been asked, asking our community if they want UTK. It's a community funded district with taxpayer dollars, yet our community has not been asked if they want this program.
So, but I think that's an unfair question. I mean, that's like asking somebody, would you like a piece of cake, but you don't have the cake to give them?
That is not true. That is your opinion. Every single district in the state of California, let the community decide how they want their dollars back.
Let's have a discussion. It's not, it's not on the agenda.
I don't.
Okay, I don't want to use the gap. Again, no, seriously, it's not on the agenda, Catherine.
I don't.
I'm asking for it to be.
I know, exactly. But the discussion right now is not appropriate.
If you put it out, if you put it out there the way that you're talking about.
Okay, let's just, we, if you guys want to have this discussion on the next meeting, that's what the question is. Should we have this discussion at the next meeting?
Should we ask the community whether or not they want to fund UTK? That's my question that we discuss. Should we ask our community?
Let's do it.
Should we ask, let's give our community the chance to answer the question.
The way you phrase the question.
No, you want to, no, it's do you want this program?
This is, the question is, should we put, can we, should we put UTK on the agenda and have a presentation on that, have a discussion about?
I don't want, I don't want to have a presentation on UTK. I want to ask, just like when you go to kindergarten, let's ask our community if they want this program, if they want to fund this program. And to say it's an impossibility, how come only five districts aren't doing it in the state of California? Only five.
I don't know the answers to those questions. I do know that it's going to cost forty million dollars to retrofit these.
Seriously, right now, we're talking about what, how we should formulate the agenda.
Then we better start thinking about it.
I don't think, I think that the way, at the rate we're going here, we're not, first of all, there's like, you mentioned five things here.
Yeah.
And the things that in order to do them, it takes time for staff to collect information.
Listen, I tried to do what you're doing, meeting with all the staff, and I was told I'm not allowed to do that. That it's taking up their time. I applaud you for your efforts and that you're actually getting to meet with staff. Because that was not the reception I was given. It is absolutely true. It's absolutely true. Juwan, please. I don't appreciate the way you're responding to me.
How is that? I'm just trying to.
I am trying to. I'm trying to. That's it. Those are my.
Again, I understand your frustration.
As a parent.
Yeah, and that's what, that's, so that's what I was going to suggest is like, do you want, so we can go down the list here. I honestly think you'd be better off if we have discussion outside and I can, we can figure out how to formulate the agenda.
I just, I just, I already answered your question, which is why I presented all this information.
Okay, let's go down the list and then let's go down the list.
Again?
No, the list, deciding whether or not we should put it on the agenda.
Okay, let's do it.
That's, that's the question that's being posed to us.
That's great.
And so we have to kind of decide whether or not it's important to put it on there. So first is that, do we want to put second step curriculum on the agenda for next month? And what I would suggest also, before we can build down this list, each of these items takes time for them to work on. As you can kind of see, the agenda is formulated to a certain point. So if we're going to stack the agenda, it will take them time to, and I would like to be able to talk to them about how much time each individual might take because it's going to, you know, asking them to do this in a month, they have to prepare and to be able to do that. And I want to get a thorough presentation, not just something that they're doing on the fly.
I understand that.
So, you know, with that said, are we interested in having a discussion about second or having a presentation on second step curriculum on the next agenda?
If I can make that comment. So I support my fellow board member of discussing these topics. And, but I would also defer to you as the president who sets the agenda and the staff's schedule decide when to put them in. So I do support having that discussion on this and some of your other topics. And I would, I would defer which meeting is it? Is it the next meeting versus another meeting? So I just wanted to say that I support it, but, but also want to support it at a time that makes sense in the rotation of topics. Because any, any topic that's important to a board member and important to the community, I think we have an opportunity to hear about it. We ought to. But I also don't want to jam five topics into next board meeting. We need to pace and rhythm.
And I totally agree with that. I mean, that's what my suggestion would have been is that we try to formulate the crafty agenda so that we can actually get full, full attention to each of these topics. I'm not opposed to putting any of them on the agenda. Absolutely not. I mean, if you are interested in it, I want to hear you, you know, about it. I don't have an issue with that. It's just that I want them to be able to actually, again, give us a thorough presentation and be able to give us a thorough understanding of what, what the reasoning is behind each topic. So then.
Well, for me, it goes back to the strategic plan, which I feel like all of these items are relevant to that. I'm, I'm one person on this board and one person amongst all of us here. And so these are the items that I would like us to discuss if they're not able to be discussed all in one. I, I, I understand that.
Okay, so, so again, would you rather us have a discussion about it to figure out what might be, might, might work for the next agenda? Or would you rather us go through right now and really force everyone to kind of decide whether or not they want it to be heard on the next agenda?
Yes.
Yes, as in the latter or yes as in?
The latter, yes. If, if there's something that people want to move to another agenda, I think that's, that will, that will be decided. But yes, I feel like these are the issues that I would like to discuss as a board collectively, as, you know, with the cabinet, with the public. Attaching presentations to the agenda, is that something that we can have a discussion on next board meeting?
If I can just say, my preferred outcome would be, I would defer to the two of you to figure out which topics when and then consult with staff to figure out when to do it. I can't join that meeting because of the Brown Act, but I would defer to the two of you to figure out what are those topics and proposed dates and then just schedule them in. If I'm asked to vote on a motion to put all five topics on to the next meeting or to predict what we would want to put them without input from staff, I wouldn't be able to support that. But I would support deferring to the two of you to come up with one of those O B, consult the staff of when we can schedule them then. And again, I support you for all these topics because you represent the community and if you want to hear about it, the community wants to hear about it. I want to hear it.
And so me and Catherine, I would suggest that if we both have discussion with staff and then with superintendent, kind of go through these topics and see which ones will fit and what would be a good idea to kind of.
Okay, can we make a decision as to what fits for the next agenda now, tonight?
Do you all want to do that? Is that something that you're interested in?
I agree with Alan. I have a line for you to work with staff to figure out what makes sense in scheduling.
Do you have any thoughts?
I agree with that. I mean, I'd hate to, I don't know what their scheduling looks like for the staff to come in and weigh in on it. So, and I don't even know if they know how much they've got going over the next forty five days where they can get us the accurate information. If, if the two of you want to meet and consult with them and if I see it on the agenda, then I'm a happy camper. If I see it on the agenda for the month after that, that's perfect too. But it needs to be coalesced with everybody's schedules because otherwise we're either getting a halfway done or not a complete report of what's out there. So I encourage what Alan was asking.
Any suggestions on?
I think we, as, as we always do, we look at what makes sense as far as timeliness of agenda items. And we can definitely do that as we've always done, which I guess would be most urgent pressing based on what's going on, which I would sometimes have discussed more recently. That is what we do.
Okay, I would like for the next board meeting, and I would decide when now, if that's possible, to ask that, that we attach presentations before meetings to what the public feels on the board docs.
And I'll agree with that to the extent that it's possible that it show up on that next agenda.
Which is what we do. We do that.
I mean, the discussion, I'd like to have that discussion on the next agenda. That to the extent, I don't know what kind of research needs to be done to let us know if there's issues with it, but I'll agree with that. I'd like to discuss it from this context. I know that I had a nice board agenda with some materials to read over the weekend and ask you questions. And some things were not attached. Part of it may just be timing of when the presentations can be ready based on staff. And I believe you did a really good job of flexing on the safety question, listening to community input and then flexing a presentation. So in some cases, it is possible to get things in advance. In some cases, maybe it isn't. So I'd like to hear from staff of what are the, you know, when can we get things posted in advance? When can we get things in advance? So I think that's a good conversation for us to have. Absolutely.
So would we like to do that? So we'll see that in the next agenda.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you would like at this moment to, you brought up?
Sure.
I mean, it's.
Sharing the kindergarten survey results with D N U S D families. And asking the subsequent question about how we can merge what teachers prefer and what majority of parents prefer.
You have thoughts on that?
I don't know how complex a question is for staff to research and give recommendations. My, my feeling is that if it's not a heavy lift, it would be good to get some feedback on that. But if staff needs some more time to talk about, you know, how, when, or if, you know, to work through this, if it takes more than a few weeks and it interferes with trying to finish the school year and the other priorities, I would say as long as it's on a meeting in the next, you know, one, two or three, I would defer to staff, they're ready to have that discussion.
And I know that you're back in the war for the, for the first time this meeting, but this has been extensively agendaized and discussed and researched all throughout the year. So I don't see a need for a topic to be on the agenda. And as far as this releasing surveys and consult, I would say it's a first step. Perhaps Juwan, you can consult with the staff and discuss that. That's not necessarily to be an agenda item. So in my mind, that is.
Yeah, I think that's something I could, again, we could discuss with them. I don't feel that needs to be agendaized.
I have discussed this with them. I have. It's gotten nowhere, which is why I would like us to vote on, which like boggles my mind that we have to vote on getting results to our families who took a survey. But it's, it's that with this district and with this board. Here's, here's a survey, but we're not going to share the results with you.
Well, I don't think.
I don't think.
It was accurate.
As Erica said, if, you know, it's, it's been agendaized, but sharing the results, I don't know where the roadblock is.
I mean, unfortunately, we can't discuss that right now, but it seems like somebody can be handled handily by Juwan, Holly, you know, offline.
I've asked.
Okay, well, now we're on our last game. We're going to have to look at it, so.
Holly to do that.
Well, well, well.
It hasn't been done.
I'm hearing other people ask, looking.
I've asked Shelley.
Not to the.
Parents sent email requesting it and nothing has changed. The results were not sent out to families.
I'll talk, I'll, I'll talk about it. I don't know that yet. It's an agenda item. I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate there. But I mean.
Well, see, when I, when I last, when I first brought up kindergarten, we all agreed, oh, it sounds like, yeah, everybody's on board. And you and I had a conversation and you said, yeah, it sounds like they, they're going to move forward with making adjustments. And that did not happen because teachers came and said they didn't want to change their schedule. But if you, first of all, no, we didn't get a robust presentation. We got a presentation that had no information on what these assessments actually consist of nor how long they take to be administered. That's present, that's information.
I'm not trying to cut you off, Catherine, but again, we're not having the discussion right now.
So I'm asking that this be put on the agenda for next month.
To put the survey on for next month? And to put, to put the results of the survey on to distribute that to parents? That's what you want to be on the agenda?
Yeah, to have those results distributed to parents. Yeah, that'll be the first step. Yeah, I mean, I could, I could go for more, but I, how, you know, do I dare?
How's this, if, if there can't be some agreement and you have a discussion with staff, if that can't be done, then let's put it on the agenda. Okay?
But it's.
What Erica is saying is it doesn't need, it doesn't need to be agendaized. If it can be done without putting it on the agenda, that's my preference.
Yeah.
If it can't be done without putting on, putting, putting it on the agenda, then let's hear about why that is and let's talk about it. But let's put that on the agenda if in fact it can't be shared.
Okay, but listen, so the majority of parents, when they were asked one question only, whether they would like kindergarten to start from full day from day one, said that they would. Then we got a presentation about what teachers want. We didn't get any information about assessments.
That's a whole other issue.
Exactly, which is why it was not a robust discussion. And it was, it's also why parents have not been given another option other than that initial survey, which was like a pulse test. And then there were presented with teacher information.
I mean, I can talk.
I don't want to just have the, here are the results, families, like.
Well, that's what you asked for.
That's what you asked for. You asked the results and that's.
And, and I have asked for the families to be asked for follow-up information, given the results.
It's a new survey. You want a new survey. If that's what you're wanting to put on the agenda, then let's call it a new survey.
Sure, call it a new survey or call it giving families more information.
It's a new survey. Call it what you want. It's a whole new survey. If that's what you want, then ask for that.
It's two-part.
Well, let's deal with part number one and we'll deal with part number two later. I don't, if you want a new survey, then ask for the new survey.
Let's, let's not have kindergarten on every single month. Why don't we just get it all over with? Give the families the information and ask the follow-up question. Given this information. Give the families the information and ask the follow-up question, given this information.
I will go back to originally. I honestly think this was, that's, hey, we can have a discussion with them, and, and you and I can have a discussion with, with them.
I would like to know more about these assessments and how long they take. That was not presented in your presentation, Shelby.
That, that.
So we can talk about. Eric, are you asking for that?
Yeah.
To, deferring to Doug's comment, may I ask you, are you asking, let's talk about whether or not we put a new presentation once again about kindergarten on the agenda and a new survey, if that's what you're asking, so let's discuss whether.
And how the results given to families.
Yeah, I'm just confused. When, when the, when the presentation was made, you were here, right?
Yes, I was here.
And, and the question was available for you to ask, how long these things take at the time of the presentation?
I did ask that.
And, well, then what?
I wasn't given any information.
Well, you should have followed up. I mean.
I'm following up now.
The opportunity to ask those questions is at the time of the presentation. You're asking now for another presentation.
Because this, the results still have not been sent to family members.
I'm good with the results being sent to family members. We're already past that. Okay, if, if, if you'll accept it, let's send the results out if that's at all possible. If it's not possible, for whatever reason, let's find out about it and have a discussion. I'm fine with that.
Okay, I would also like to ask that family members be asked. First, first and foremost, I'd like more information of, I know the answer, because I've been told by kindergarten teachers how long it all takes. But I think that that information was not presented, and I did ask for it, and it was not given to me. I would like that information presented, and then let families look at that information and make decisions about what they want. Ask people what they want.
That's another survey.
Okay, fine, it's another survey, but also give them information, give them more information, give them the information about their results of the survey that they took. Also let them know how long these assessments take.
Are we gonna do this on the next agenda? Is this something that we want?
I, I think from my perspective, let's, let's deal with getting the information out there and find out why it can't be.
Okay.
And that may overlap into the questions that you're seeking to be asked.
I mean, again, I would impose, I would like to do that myself. I would like to go talk to them and figure out what we can do and we cannot do for the next meeting. And I'd come back and tell you all, like, what was appropriate, what can be done and what cannot be done.
I'll just keep asking.
And that is fine, absolutely. You know, that is your, that's, that's what you're here for. That's what you should be doing. So, but some of these things, I think, take time to figure out, and it's better than we just sit here and just kind of debate about it right now, which it's not supposed to be. But I can go talk, and we can figure out what is appropriate and what can be done on this, on the next agenda. And if it's not.
It's appropriate to share information with families when they take a survey.
Okay, thank you.
It's appropriate to give them the results.
And if we can't, if it's something that can be better handled a different way, or it's not appropriate for the agenda, I will let you know. And then we can have the same discussion if you like, in the next meeting, if you want, if you feel like it wasn't put on the agenda, then you can ask again at that time. Or we can, you know, as I said, I, we can talk, and we can try to figure it out. Is that, would that be satisfactory, or is it, you have the additional?
I think I've already said what I, I'd like, and it's not something that you agree to, or you agree to, or you agree to, or you agree to, so.
I thought I agreed.
I, I.
We'll have the results discussion, you, you'll have the results, I already have, so you can have them. And then I'll ask again for this topic to be brought up on another agenda.
So I can say, I, I don't disagree. I think any board member has a right to bring a motion at the appropriate time. And if a motion is to be made at a future board meeting to release some information, then we should put it on the agenda, we should discuss it, and we vote on it. Whether it's the next meeting or the next meeting, I'll defer to the people who drive the agendas and build the agendas. So I would encourage you to, the, the, you know, the two of you to, to me, as I said before, and decide whether it's next, you know, the next meeting coming up. Or if there's some reason why more preparation is needed, that, you know, get moved to another meeting, that we don't want you too far down the road.
So that's not what I, okay, so my impression was that you're having the discussion whether or not that we all agreed that the results would be shared.
If possible.
If possible, and you're gonna have that discussion to get that happen.
No, what, what we agreed is that we're gonna defer to, would you want to talk with the staff about what makes sense? And then what Doug had asked, he agreed with you, and that if, that if the decision was not to release the survey results, that it'd be agendaized at that point.
Yes.
So that's inside the agenda.
I think that's the consensus in all this, so.
The result, can I just say, you know, it's not on the agenda, the results, it's not on the agenda, but they're public. I mean, it's not.
In terms of the results? Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. I mean, it was, yeah.
The question is, can we get the results out to the public?
Well, so it's not on the agenda, we'll talk about that.
And if it's not able to be done, then let's put it on the agenda. That's where we're at.
Got it.
All right.
Okay.
Twelve point four. What, what, what did you just want to hold on?
I would like the community to be asked whether or not they want U T K.
But I think, but I think we know, I think we know the answer to that question, and that's not a fair question. And I don't want to ask an unfair question to the community. Of course, everybody wants universal T K. It's not a question of whether I want it or I don't want it. The question is feasibility. So, so the question has to be phrased in a way, do you want universal T K if it affects the rest of our curriculum? And we've had those discussions. So if you, if you're simply, I cannot support it.
Do you want to have a discussion on the agenda, on the next agenda? We want to have your T K on the agenda next month. It sounds like Catherine is asking with the motion, or asking for the agenda to have including U T K on for the next month.
Specifically that we ask the community what they want.
So I'll go back to my theme. If a fellow board member wants a topic discussed, that the community input, they support that. It's a question of when. So I can imagine not every school in California that has the program, instantaneously they all have them at the same time. You know, they, they evaluated it and they, you know, considered it, and we've had a consideration process that I was a part of. And so if there's a point in time where it needs to be reconsidered, which is what I'm hearing you say, you know, I support that at the appropriate time with the appropriate preparation for the conversation. So I support having the conversation. I don't necessarily support it being on the next agenda. I would, again, have the resident board and superintendent come up with some recommendations of what's the appropriate question to discuss, and, and when.
At first, I think that's especially as we, as we discussed, but again, I'm not, I'm, as Alan said, I'm open to it as well. I think I'm open to have that, that I, I would talk with you, with staff, and see if there is additional information that they can provide, or something that they can.
All I'm asking is that the, that we have a discussion, that the community be asked the question, do you want U T K in this school district?
And the reason I can't agree with putting it on the agenda in that form is because it, it presupposes that it is a feasibility financially at this point, and there's other things connected to that. Do you want U T K if it will affect the rest of the program? So I can't support that.
It doesn't make sense to me to just ask like a question, I mean, for an agenda, you don't just, you have a presentation. You can, you can decide whether or not it's something that, that's the direction you want ahead, and as a board, we can decide. Is that the question?
Brian, we asked one question.
Right, let me have a presentation, so basically. What I'm suggesting is that they have a presentation about this. They have a presentation, they present about. Sorry?
Or it is on that line.
Yeah.
It's not the agenda or not, it's not. Is there more direction?
How about we do this, are you making a motion that that be, huh?
I'd say for all of these.
Okay, so is there, is there a second?
Well, can second, but is there, is there board majority that would want this on the next agenda or agenda?
I don't think you see the consensus for that right now.
Yeah, and it's not on the next agenda, but.
All right. All right, twelve point four, adjourned meeting. Motion adjourned meeting. All right, second.
Again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned meeting passes, meeting is adjourned at eight nineteen P M. Thank you.
Stay very close.